I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Greg, roll call please.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Ms. Witche.
Here.
Mr. McGurven.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move to excuse the absent council member.
Second.
Second. Moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Witche, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we're gonna start tonight out with a proclamation.
Okay, this proclamation is in support of National Public Works Week, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure and services that are of vital importance to a sustainable and resilient community and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Renton, and whereas such infrastructure and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for building, maintaining, improving, and protecting our city's mobility network, piped utilities, solid waste systems, and other essential public work systems, and whereas it is in the public interest for the residents, leaders, and children of Renton to gain knowledge and of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community, and whereas 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week, it starts here, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas thanks to these professionals, our streets, roads, bridges, and public transportation keep us linked together, and our clean water and sanitation services keep us healthy and allow for our community to grow and prosper. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2019, to be National Public Works Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to recognize the contributions public works professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, and witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 20th day of May 2019, and this is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second.
Boy, that was seconded by everybody. Take a pick. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. I won't even ask for an opposition on that one. I just would like to say a couple words with, as Greg, Greg, come on up. Greg, you have done a wonderful job with your crew, public works, I for one, and I think I speak, I know I speak for the entire council, that we really appreciate all the work that you put in, everybody has put in for these years. I've been with the city for 53 years, I know many of you personally, and I know how hard you work, and I just want everybody to know that we do appreciate every one of you, and for that, I want to give this to Greg.
Thank you.
It's my honor, I kind of asked the mayor if he'd let me do this tonight, because I'm very proud. I'm almost as old as Greg. You're getting there.
They'll never catch you. If I slow down, you're gonna catch up, so. Thank you, President Person, members of the city council, I'm Greg Zimmerman, Renton's Public Works Administrator, I want to thank you for your recognition, for the contributions made by the public works professionals by proclaiming this work National Public Works Week in Renton. Public works, as the proclamation stated, includes the construction, operation, and maintenance of infrastructure that is vital to the daily activities and needs of the city's residents and businesses, streets, utilities, traffic infrastructure, the airport, even when the airport can be difficult at times, I'm including that, that's part of our public works infrastructure, and services such as solid waste collection. We in the Public Works Department are honored to provide service to the citizens and the Renton community. Once again, thank you for this recognition.
Well. Next on the agenda, we have a special presentation for the 2020 to 25, 2025 Medic One EMS levy.
Good evening, hopefully you can hear me okay. My name is Michelle Plord, and I'm the EMS Division Director for King County, and I want to thank you for inviting me to come brief you on where we are with the levy process and the renewal. It's a six-year levy, and it expires at the end of this year, so we've been doing a little bit of a tour, going to cities and sharing what the process is, what the recommendations are, and where we are with the process and answering any questions. So you should have a PowerPoint I have for you to share here today. Before we get started on that, though, I usually find that it's really helpful to find, to share what the value of the program that we provide, emergency medical services, what it is. We have a very unique system here, and anyone who has dived into it a little bit really knows how unique we are, and I want to share why, and what are some of the principles and the factors that make it so unique. So one of the concepts that we have is called a tiered system, and what it means is that anyone in King County who dials 911 has access to the system itself. They call in, and they will get an answer by a dispatcher, who has a standardized set of questions that they ask. They call this criteria-based dispatch, and the dispatch centers ask, again, these very standardized questions to figure out whether they should send an EMT, which is a, provides the basic life support layer in our system, our EMTs go on all the calls and stabilize the patient, and they also ask questions to discern whether they need a higher level of care, and this is provided by paramedics in our system, and there's five programs. King County Medic One serves Renton, and they are trained with over 2,500 hours out at Harborview Medical Center. It's kind of like they are physicians out in the field trained specifically for emergencies, whether it be trauma or a medical-based problem. So that really is very, very different than other communities that provide EMS service, that real distinction between a paramedic layer and the EMTs. One of the things that's really important for us as well is that we like to collect data, to understand whether our system is successful or not, to understand whether we need to make any changes to those criteria, any changes to the training, and part of what that is, is to collect information. So we are very comfortable with numbers, and here's a few that I like to throw up. One is that we have a very large population, over 2.1 million. This information is from the 2018 annual report that we provide to the King County Council, I think it's over 2.2 by now. We serve over 2,100 square miles, we provide over 200,000 responses per year. For a medic unit, our average unit response time is 7.7 minutes, compared to the standard that we have, which is under 10 minutes 90% of the time, we're well below that, so that just shows the, how well we're performing within the county. But the thing that's our real pride and joy is our cardiac arrest survival rate, and the reason that's so important is, in a case of cardiac arrest, where a person is clinically dead, their heart is not beating, it takes a very, very sophisticated system to come together, to work smoothly and seamlessly, to make sure that the things that we need to do, which is to defibrillate the heart, to do CPR, to get circulation in the system, is done well, we identify these cases early, we get people out to the scene, and I liken it to a really well-choreographed scene of medical caretakers. And we have one of the highest rates in the country, if not the world. 56% of those folks survive, and in King County, in 2017, there were 251 people that survived. In Renton, in that same year, there were 10, so there are 10 folks in Renton that are alive today because the system works. And so those are the kinds of things that we like to look at to make sure and measure our system, make sure it's working. The other aspect, and this is for the more visual folks of you, I'm a little bit of a visual person, what does that tiered system look like in our county? Our county, without any markers, is really varied, from very, very dense urban areas, such as Seattle and Renton, out to the wilderness, out in the eastern part, where it's mountainous and not very dense. We have to serve that entire county and provide that same level of service to everyone that lives in our county. And a part of this tiered system, again, you could see geographically, these are our dispatch centers, there's four of them in the county, Valley Communications Center serves Renton, layered on top of that are the 29 BLS agencies, that basic life support, fire departments, and RFAs like Renton serve this area. Then layered on top of that are their five paramedic programs with their 26 units, distributed in a very precise way, so that we can serve our community the best, where we can get to them quickly, where they are balanced in terms of the number of calls that they can go on. And then, of course, the last piece is connected to our hospitals, so that for those who need further care, they can get to a hospital and get that additional care. So I mentioned a couple things about the tiered system, that leads into something that we call our medical model, so that you notice that we talk about data, we look at that data and analyze it and see how we can provide better care to our patients. That in its entirety is what we call our medical model. We're always looking to see how we can serve our community better, based on data and information. We collect outcomes from the patients that we take to the hospitals, so that we can better understand how we can provide better care. Again, we want to adhere to a regional system, that we have partnerships with the cities, and always like to hear whether there are things that we can do better, which is part of what I'm doing here today, is reaching out to the cities to make sure that we're connected and listening to the community. One of the things that I always like to share is that our system is not always the cheapest system. We want to make sure that the care that we provide is the best that we can, the best that we can afford, and it's a good value to our community. And when we look at our data, and when we are making good, sound choices for our service, that becomes and translates into cost-effectiveness, and so you'll see how that translates when we start talking about finances. But that's, I want to make sure that folks really understand that it's one of the real core principles, is that we make sure that we're always focusing on efficiencies, both financial and system-wide. And the last thing is that we like having an EMS levy, even though we have an opportunity to do a 10-year levy or a permanent levy, I believe, and I think our partners believe as well, is that when you have a moment to come in and bring all your partners together, and look at what you're doing, and try and figure out if you can do it better, I don't mind that. I think it's actually really important that, and a levy serves that. A six-year levy, which is part of the recommendation, allows us to get our community members together and see how we can do things better and make recommendations that are brought by consensus. One of the things that came up during our deliberations in our last process was, why is a levy helpful? And the way that our financing works is that during a downturn in our economy, and we saw that in 2008 levy period, that we were still able to provide the services that we need, we had to tighten our belts a little bit, but it actually was able to get through that period, drops in AVs, assessed values are home, which is where this funding comes from, in the good times and the bad. So we've had it tested in the good times, and more recently in the last levy period, we had it tested in the more challenging times, and a levy was able to sustain us. So getting to the part where, why we're here, the, as I mentioned, the levy expires at the end of this year, we had a 2020, 2025 EMS Advisory Committee Task Force come together. We started in earnest in the fall of 2017, asking all the cities, over 50,000, which included Renton, the council members, fire commissioners, smaller cities, which were identified as sound cities, to come together under the leadership of the executive to come up with recommendations for our strategic plan. The executive delegated that to Rachel Smith, who hosted our first meeting in January of 2018. The two things that we needed to come up with was a levy rate and our strategic plan. And although the levy rate is something really cool that everybody wants to jump to, we really look at, what are the things that we need, what are the programs that we need, what is the financing for those programs, and then we translate that into a levy rate. And so on May 8th, our plan and the levy rate of 26.5 cents per $1,000 of assessed value was introduced to King County Council, and so we're doing our rounds to the cities to also solicit support of the cities to get that on the ballot. So the process was, you can see in this, stepwise, I mentioned the first step was to get our task force together. They allowed what we are calling subcommittees, those different areas that I mentioned, the BLS or basic life support, they had a group that got together and looked at what their needs were, we had the paramedic group come together, look at what their needs were and their costs. We had a third group called the Regional Services Program, which are the ones that oversee and offer programs across the entire county. Our offices operated out of there, we, it includes medical direction, includes the data collection and review and analysis that I mentioned, it also looks at BLS training, EMT training, and dispatch training, these things that are offered at a regional level. And the reason I'm going into that is that's how we've organized our recommendations. Those three subcommittees then would come together with their recommendations and their budgets, and their information was reviewed by the fourth committee, which is a finance committee. Any questions about that before I move on?
Don't see any.
Alrighty. So I'm gonna kind of run through these, if you have any questions, let me know. These are the full recommendations, as endorsed by the task force of last September. For the ALS program, which is the one that supports the paramedics, they recommended continuing to use a unit allocation, which is how we fund them and figure out which, how much each program gets. We also included a placeholder, we know that the population is expected to continue to rise in our community, we're also expecting our call volumes to increase. The placeholder is very specific, though, that it does not identify where the unit would be placed, but it's used as a placeholder in case we do need it. We do regular, regular annual assessments of performance of each of our units, and so we know that through that process, that we would be able to identify any stress areas. And the last piece is to look at options to address paramedic workforce needs, we know that there's a lot of retirements up and coming, and other kinds of efficiencies that would impact our service. Second to that was our BLS program, which supports our fire departments, including the Renton Regional Fire Authority. We agreed that we would continue to support the BLS allocation, streamline it to make it easier for departments to get their funds, and then distribute it using the same assessed value and service levels. So this is a way that we can balance between agencies or jurisdictions that have higher AVs and maybe lower service levels, against areas where we have lower AVs and maybe some higher service levels. So it's a nice balance between the different forces that operate in our community. The second thing, and this is particularly germane for Renton, is that we committed to a four-million-a-year exploration, continued exploration of our mobile integrated health. In the community down here, it might have been called a community medical technician, this is where we have units that are not on lights and siren response, but for low-acuity calls that are more likely in need of services or connecting people to services, folks with mental health and/or homelessness or substance use disorder, and trying to get them connected and taking that time, so they don't have to go back in service. There were three units in the area, one in Kent, and the other down in the Valley Regional Fire Authority and South King Fire area. I know Renton has been very interested in that, and then this fund, these funds would help support that. Regional Service Program, to continue the programs that we already have, I've already identified, including medical direction, to also create additional efficiencies and effectiveness in terms of looking at our data, how can we do things better, and support the region. And then the last item is a very interesting concept, which is strategic initiatives. And we created this idea a number of levy periods ago, where as a region, there might be ideas that we have, the community medical technician was one, but we wanted to have some funding where we could explore ideas, transforming our paper records into a digital setting was one example that we've had in the past, and so we wanted to continue supporting that, where we could explore innovative new ideas in pilots, and so there are three of them in this, in this strategic plan. So the financial recommendations, I included pulling all those programmatic recommendations together, and wanting to provide stability for those, for the funding of those programs. And one of those things is to create and support a rainy day fund, which we could support the entire system for 90 days if we needed to. The second piece was to make sure that we had adequate reserves, and you'll see in the next few slides where those reserves and the amounts, and making sure that we had enough to cover unforeseen situations. And then the last piece was that, yes, they did endorse a levy length of six years. So, one thing that was new for this presentation is that back in September, when they were putting their recommendations together into a plan, they knew that we were going to get an economic forecast in March of 2019. So at the time, back in September, they had funding numbers that were based on an August economic forecast, so they knew that this was going to come up. So what you have before you in this table, I know it's kind of busy, is a lineup of what the impact of the economic forecast from March did to our revenue projections. What I'd like to note is that the expenditures, as you can see across the top, do not change. So it's based on the premise that our expenditures and our reserves are the same from last August, September, when the recommendations were made, all the way through to current state. The thing that did change is the revenue projection, and you can see from under the August column that they projected that they were going to collect over $1.094 billion over the six-year levy period. The update to that, and that translated to a 27-cent levy rate. In March of 2019, at that same levy rate, we would have collected $1.117 billion, so that we would have an excess of over $30 million that, and so we thought, what would it look like if we could lower the levy rate to collect the same amount of money that we would need to meet our expenditures and our reserves? And so that allowed us to drop the recommendation of a 27-cent levy rate down to a 26.5. So this explains those details. One of the things that is also a premise in this is that we would carry forward unspent funds from this current levy period, which is expected to be 20 million, and include that in our calculations. Any questions about that?
I don't see any.
Okay. One of the things, we're celebrating our 40th anniversary of the Regional Medic One System. It first was passed in 1979. The county was a very different place back then, and Seattle was a very large city compared to other places. One of the things that they, the region agreed to, is that the money collected in Seattle would remain in Seattle, and that premise is still standing today. So what we do when we do our financial planning is the county outside of Seattle figures out what their expenditures are, just all those recommendations that I've presented to you today, figure out a levy rate, and then ask them whether that levy rate and the amount that they would collect in the City of Seattle is amenable to them, and they've said yes. And so this is the split, it's usually about a 40/60 split, and this just gives you the details of what that looks like. One of the questions that I had is that when we calculated that it was going to be over $1 billion, we thought, well, what is the increase for? How can we explain what that increases? And so we looked at it, and the column on the left shows what we call status quo, and status quo takes the exact same programs that we have current state and projects them into the next levy period and how much that would cost. The column on the right shows what the proposed changes are, and you can see that the difference between the two is $74 million, which is not a whole lot of money, it is a lot of money in and of itself, but relative to a six-year levy and the amount it's collected, it's $12 million a year. And so I wanted to know, what were those increases? How could I explain those increases, other than what we're currently doing, projected with inflation into the next levy period? And this is what it looks like. So apart from inflation of what we currently are doing is those increases to ALS, the paramedics, or the placeholder that I mentioned, so half of that are reserves for making sure that we have support of our paramedic program. The placeholder is 50% of that increase. The mobile integrated health, the MIH program that we're offering out to the entire county, including Renton, is another quarter, so that's 26.5 million over this, over the levy period. And we have some small increases to BLS, 9%, and then those reserves that everyone was so insistent upon, making sure that we have adequate reserves for our program. And so that explains that 74 million increase in percentages. Oh, I don't want to end the show. All right, so in summary, what are our recommendations? We want to ensure that our programmatic and financial needs are met, we want to make sure we have adequate reserves, so that anything that we can, we don't anticipate, still will be covered, we want to have sound financial policies and have flexibility based on things that will come up over the next levy period, and then, but most importantly, is continue the practice of prudent use of funds, which is why we recommended a lowering in the levy rate. So what does this support? A six-year levy, 26.5 cents per $1,000 assessed value, the total financial plan is a $1.1 billion request. We are now looking at a November ballot, we have to have both King County Council and 11 cities supporting it, to put it on the ballot. There has been a change, in the past, it would have been all 11 cities, but the legislative change allowed it to be 75% of those cities, so that means nine in this case, and we're hoping Renton is one of them. Just to get it into perspective of a homeowner, a homeowner who has a half a million dollar house would be expected to collect $132.50 per year to help support a program as vast and as successful as the one that we have. So where are we right now? We are in the midst of doing briefings, Shoreline City Council. Shoreline City Council passed their legislation last Monday. I know that, I'm here to brief you here today, we're going to Bellevue next week, Kirkland's looking at it also, so we're on the roll. And we briefed the Regional Policy Committee at King, at the King County Council for the last couple of weeks. So with that, I will see if you have any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Being a recipient of a ride in one of these cars. I don't know what that is.
I think that was me.
Anyway, being a recipient in one of these vehicles, I appreciate the program very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next we have administrative report.
Thank you. I have one item for council this evening. The Renton Stop and Swap is on Saturday, June 1st. The Solid Waste Utility will hold its annual reuse it, Renton Stop and Swap One Day Reuse Event from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Renton Memorial Stadium main parking lot, which is located at 405 Logan Avenue North. For more information, including a list of the acceptable and unacceptable items to drop off, please visit the city's website at www.rentonwa.gov/stopandswap. Or you can contact the Solid Waste Utility at 425-430-7396. The number again, 425-430-7396. Please keep usable items out of the landfill, your trash could be someone else's treasure. Thank you, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, next is audience comment. We have five people signed up, and when you come to the podium, if you'll give us your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes, and up on the counter is a little timer, it'll start green, and it'll go amber, and when it goes red, I'll cut you off. With that, the first person signed up is Norma Schultz, I think it is.
It was close, councilman, it's Nora, N-O-R-A. Sorry, my handwriting probably leads a lot to be desired. Thank you. Good evening, council, my name is Nora Schultz. I reside at North Williams Avenue in Renton, Washington. I am actually here tonight as the Vice President of the North Renton Neighborhood Association to comment on projects that affect our neighborhood. The first being the Williams and Wells Two Way Conversion Project, the East Side Interceptor Lining Project, and the proposed development, Topgolf Development. Our comments tonight may be a little unintentionally timely, as this is Public Works Week. The first comment we would like to make is that the North Renton Neighborhood Association Board would like to thank the following individuals for meeting with us to address our concerns related to the Williams and Wells Two Way Conversion. Those individuals are Mr. Greg Zimmerman, who happens to be here tonight, that was timely, Mr. Jim Seitz, Mr. Chris Barnes, Mr. Blake Costa, who I believe is also in the room, and Detective Clarence Tolliver. This, this meeting took place after business hours to accommodate our schedules, and most of these individuals are salaried staff, so it's not lost on us that this was somewhat of their personal time, and we very much appreciate them taking that time to meet with us and address our concerns. Our concerns were respectfully listened to and professionally addressed. We believe staff was appreciative of our input and that our insight will result in a safer transition of the two-way conversion into our neighborhood. This type of collaboration allows city staff to bring their expertise on public works issues and meld it with our expertise on our neighborhood. We look forward to continuing to be a resource on this project for city as this project moves forward. With respect to the East Side Interceptor Lining Project, which could have a shorter name, there have been a few bumps in the road, undoubtedly. I don't think anyone living with this project had this event on their bucket list at all, but we do appreciate the attempts that King County has made to reach out to the neighborhood and to the residents to communicate about this project. They sent notices to the residents and not just to the property owners, but to all people affected by the project, including all tenants in the area. They sent weekly emails on the project, you can sign up to get email notifications. And David Freed from King County has been especially proactive, reaching out to us before the project, and his responses to our concerns have been exceedingly timely. So this brings us to an item of concern, which is the Topgolf proposal. I realize this is a sensitive situation. We did appreciate Navics, which is the developer, or I believe the civil engineer on the project, reaching out to us initially. They sent letters to the property owners immediately adjoining the site, I believe within 1,000 feet, and they had a meeting with some of our city, our, some of our members. They explained the project to us, but there's, as this project is developing, there's a heightened level of interest in this project, and the evolution of the mixed-use parcel in the northeast corner of the site is getting a lot of attention in our neighborhood, specifically the announcement in the Renton Reporter of the six-story, 220-room hotel. The neighborhood already faces challenges with traffic and various other things that has to do with large developments in our close proximity, Boeing, the Landing, Kenworth, now Southport, and Topgolf is going to add additional challenges without the addition of a hotel, just as Topgolf itself. Now, this does not mean that we are opposed to this project, but we are extremely interested in how this is developing. So we realize negotiations on these developments are ongoing and fluid. However, in the spirit of collaboration and openness we have recently experienced, it is our request that someone on staff reach out to the NRNA with updates on this project. It would be preferable to hear from the city than to read what is written in the Renton Reporter. Those reports cannot, sometimes may not necessarily be accurate, so it would be preferable to get, as you would, the straight scoop from the city itself. Clear communication can prevent misunderstandings and hard feelings, so we would appreciate council taking this request under consideration. Mr. Robert Harrison has extended an offer to meet with us regarding another issue, and we would like to include this subject in that discussion. We do not require a response tonight. We'll include this in the agenda items we'll be sending to Mr. Harrison that he can review before our meeting. We thank him for his letter and his offer to meet with us, and we thank the council for your time and consideration of our concerns. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next I have Jason Galloway, is that it, or Galloway?
Good evening, council. Mr. Harrison, how are we? Good. This evening I stand before you, I want to talk, not, not as a resident, but as a proud and dedicated employee of the city of Renton. I was hired in 2008 in the water department, and through those 11-plus years, I've been able to work in three different departments in public works. I am currently also an officer and a proud Ask Me Local 2170 member. I'm also on the bargaining team, as you well know that we are currently in bargaining session, and I have a legitimate concern, as do all of our workers here. And our concern is this, our concern is that our workforce is being devalued, and we want to know why. Now, I've, I've gone through this question in my mind for, since October, since our, since the beginning of the contracts negotiations, and, you know, I can't, I cannot come up with an answer. Now, is it because the, the level of service that we provide has gone down? It can't be, because we still provide services that are second to none in this county, for sure, and that's been proven. Is it because of the economy? Can't be because of the economy. We all know how, how great the economy is right now. We hear it from the mayor, you know, in his newsletters, in his, in his appearances at the shops, that, that he appreciates all of our work, and, and the fact is that the city of Renton is doing great. So my concern is this, if, if we're not being devalued, then why are we having such trouble at the, at the bargaining table? Now, Mr. Person, you touched on it earlier with the proclamation with Mr. Zimmerman, that you do appreciate, we know that you guys appreciate our work. The work that we do is very, very important, vital to public health and safety. I myself am a lift station technician for the, for the wastewater department. I'm not sure if you know what that is, but what that is, is, is we have 23 lift stations in the city, and the sewage has to go somewhere, so it ends up in our stations, and we make sure that it gets pumped to where it's supposed to be, not in the rivers, not in the, in the residents' houses, not in the lakes. We make sure that it goes where it's supposed to be, and we take pride in that. There's only two of us that do that in the city. Now, that's just a, a brief example of the things that we take care of in the city. So like I said, I know that you guys appreciate what we do, and we love to hear it, we do. But right now, we are in a bargaining season, and the best way to show your appreciation is honestly, is to give us a fair contract. That's all we're looking for. So if, if you can consider the things that I've said, and take it upon yourselves, and hopefully we can, we can wrap this negotiations up, it's been going on a little bit too long, and, and what's, what's best for both sides is, is obviously what's best for everybody. So I thank you.
Thank you. Next is.
Yes. My name is Christina Raeb, and I live in Bellevue, but I work here at the city of Renton in the Administrative Services Department in I, the IT Division. I support the software that allows residents and business owners to develop their land within local regulations, as well as other internal systems that enable the city's day-to-day operations. I'm also a proud member of the Ask Me Local 2170. We're facing challenges reaching an agreement on our new contract. By refusing to consider a, a cost of living increase equal to the other employee groups, the city is telling us that we're second class, that we're not as valuable. But when we buy groceries, or pay for housing, or childcare, Ask Me members have to pay the same as everybody else. The cost of living in and around Renton is the same for everyone. I am here to ask council for help. The negotiators representing city leadership have told us that they are not authorized to offer us equality in our cost of living increase. We ask that you, the city's leaders, help us. Give the city negotiating team authorization to offer us the same cost of living increases granted to other groups within the city. All we are asking for is to be treated fairly and equally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name's Craig Prey, I'm the Water Quality Supervisor for the city's water department. I thought it was important to talk tonight. I think all the bargaining units should be treated the same with the cost of living. What our division does is we take care of all the water facilities, so our water treatment, our water pumps, our wells, our chemical feed systems, our telemetry system, city's operation runs smoothly for the water department. For instance, we prevent things from happening that happened in Flint, Michigan, that happened at Mercer Island with the E. coli. When we had the big fire up here off of Puget, I believe it was the largest call in King County history for their fire. That was the smallest reservoir we had in the city, because of the hard work of the staff and everybody else, we only had a 300,000-gallon reservoir. George was there, the mayor was there, George was our water manager. George called me, because of the staff, I was able to sit there and monitor what was going on to make sure it was going to keep up, and we have a backup plan that we could have used, and everything was doing what it was supposed to do. And, you know, unless you're behind the scenes like us, you don't realize, and it's critical. Now, I think council member Person, you're probably about the only one who's been here longer than me, I've been here 37 years. And I don't have that many years left. Why this is important, that we get the equal cost of living that other bargaining units have gotten, is there's seven people in my group, four of them are probably going to be gone in five years, within five years, and it's difficult to fill those positions right now. And what you have to realize, every year, we get behind with the simple cost of living. That's not asking for a raise, that's just, that's what the cost of living is, just to keep up. So if we short-change anybody, that year by year, it compounds, and it gets more and more difficult. And I have good people on staff now, like I said, four of us are going to be gone within five years. It's going to be very difficult to get quality people in here. We don't want things to happen like what happened with Flint, what happened to Mercer Island, and if we would have had a disaster up here on the hill with that fire. So I appreciate your time, let's get this done, and be fair to everybody so we can keep good people here. Thank you.
And here comes Katie.
Good evening, council members. My name is Katie Garo. I'm the Deputy Executive Director for MLK Labor. We're the umbrella labor organization here in King County. Oh, there I am. We represent 150,000 workers in 150 different unions here in King County. I myself am a proud member of Labor's Local 242 Building and Construction Trades Union. Before I go into my spiel about why I'm here to support these workers, I just want to offer up that my father himself was a construction worker, but then later became a sewer treatment operator, and proudly worked as a public employee for 25 years. That health insurance allowed me to have health insurance all the way through my childhood, growing up. Because of his career in public service, he was also able to coach me in sports and be an active parent. And that's what a union contract does, that's what a public sector good job does for families. Union members here in King County are garbage collectors, we're Uber drivers, we're cops, we lay rebar, we teach our kids, and we build the best planes in the world. I'm here today to, to express the labor movement's support for Ask Me Local 2170 and their fight for a fair contract. The economy in King County is booming, and it's beautiful. A strong economy means construction workers aren't sleeping in their cars, and public employees aren't facing furloughs. But it also means that our cost of living goes up. The rent, property taxes, milk, it all gets more expensive. Being a public employee means that you'll never get rich. Workers trade the possibility of wealth for a career of meaning and stability. Public employers like the city of Renton use COLA so that workers' wages keep pace with the cost of living. This is a principle that the labor movement and public employers have long fought to preserve, because it has integrity. It provides transparency to taxpayers. It is defensible. What isn't defensible is one class of workers receiving a higher cost of living adjustment than another in the exact same city. Renton is a union town, more than 30% of the voters here in this city live in union households. We hope that today you will stand with the principles of fairness and equity and with these workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda, does anybody wish to remove anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would that the consent agenda be approved as written?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, that the consent agenda be approved as written. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none in the past. Next is unfinished business. Ms. Witche.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee, Committee, Utilities Committee has three reports to present.
Okay, the first report is regarding a local hazardous waste management program projects agreement. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the Community Services Agreement with Public Health Seattle and King County to accept $68,730.91 of non-matching grant funds in 2019 through 2020 for local hazardous waste management program projects. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee report recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Witche, that the council concur in the recommendation of the Utilities Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? Meeting report approved.
The second committee report is regarding the Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant Interagency Agreement. Due to- The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to execute the interagency agreement for 2019 through 2020 with King County to accept $199,990 of non-matching grant funds to implement waste reduction and recycling programs, and this is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee report.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Witche, that the Utility Committee's report be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, it's passed.
Okay, the final Utilities Committee report is regarding cost participation for a water line extension at 3731 Park Avenue North. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the city's cost participation in the amount of $58,993.90 for a water line extension at 3731 Park Avenue North. Payment will be made after the completion of the improvements and all conveyance documents, bill of sale, easement, and as-built plans of the water main improvements have been received, and this is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee report.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Witche, that the council approve the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the ayes have it.
That will be it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee has...
Finance Committee report.
Six reports to be read.
Okay, the first committee report is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable, total payment of $4,167,923.69 for a number of vouchers. Payroll benefit withholding a number of vouchers and eight wire transfers. Payroll, total payment of $1,443,423.99 for payroll vouchers, which includes 676 direct deposits and 10 checks, April 1st through 15th, 2019 pay period. Municipal Court, total payment of $9,607 for a number of vouchers. A listing of voucher numbers can be found on record with the city clerk's office. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the, the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Prince, that the Finance Committee report be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, it's approved.
The next Finance Committee report is regarding utility billing adjustment for REAP SP Marina Landing LLC. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the utility bill adjustment for water, sewer, and King County Metro-related charges from a water leak at the service address of 1303 North 20th Street, Building B, as presented for the total amount of $2,769.28. The adjustment includes city water, $412.07, city sewer, $844.19, and King County Metro, $1,513.02, charges above their normal usage, and this is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pavoni.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Perez, that the committee report be approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Seeing no, any nays? Seeing none, committee report is approved.
Okay, the next Finance Committee report is regarding fee waiver requests for summer community services events in 2019. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the request waiver of $13,650 in park, shelter, rental, parking, garage pass, and permit fees for community service, community events in 2019. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Second.
Got to cut you right. Been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Prince, the committee report be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Seeing none, committee report is approved.
The next Finance Committee report is regarding a Homestead Community Land Trust for Willowcrest Townhomes grant award. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award a $332,000 density fee grant to Homestead Community Land Trust for the Willowcrest Townhomes to help complete a deep green building standard for Affordable Homeownership Pilot for the 12-unit development project in the Sunset area, subject to an acceptable agreement to be approved by council established between the City and Homestead Community Land Trust, and this is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Prince, that the committee report be approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? None, seeing none, it's approved.
The next committee report is regarding 2015 through 2018 Fresh Bucks Implementation Agreement Amendment Number Eight. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Amendment Number Eight to CAG 16129 with the City of Seattle Office of Sustainability and Environment to accept additional FINI grant funding for 2019, up to $4,025.94, to fund an incentive program for shoppers using their Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits, and this is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pavoni.
This is, I believe, the third year of this program. It's extremely successful. I believe Seattle pays for this, and it's through the Nutritional Supplement Program called, and it's with SNAP, and I think it's a one-to-one dollar for every, every SNAP dollar to every Fresh Bucks, and it allows people to actually go to the farmer's market and get fresh produce, and milk, and bread, and all kinds of nutritional food at a deep saving. So, with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Prince, that the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Seeing none, the committee report is passed. Next.
Okay, and the final Finance Committee report is regarding Transportation Improvement Board Complete Streets Grant Agreement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the State of Washington Transportation Improvement Board Complete Streets Grant Agreement in the amount of $400,000 for the Hauser Way Intersection and Pedestrian Improvements Project. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Prince, that we concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Seeing none, the report is passed.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
You worked hard today.
Yes, we did.
But then you work hard every day, so, uh, we have no, nothing on ledge, oh.
Um, unfinished business for me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Corbin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I do have a transportation, as vice chair of transportation, I have a transportation committee report to present.
I got that buried here.
And it doesn't show up on the written agenda, that, it was, it was in committee today, and we came out with a report quicker than expected.
Okay, the Transportation Aviation Committee report is regarding the 20 miles an hour speed limit in neighborhoods. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to prepare an ordinance to change the de facto speed limit of 25 miles per hour on residential neighborhood streets to a speed limit of 20 miles per hour. This is signed by the committee members.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to point out for the council members that, that were not on Transportation Committee today, that the, this is a significant change. This, they, the staff came in with a, with describing that there have been requests by neighborhoods to have the speed limits lowered in areas where there's, you know, obviously just a lot of residential activities, narrow streets, kids playing, kids on bikes, things like that, and in a lot of those neighborhoods, 25 miles per hour is really not an appropriate speed. 20 is closer to an appropriate speed. Sometimes the speed limit should even be a little slower, probably, but they, that we had a discussion about whether we would just try and identify those specific neighborhoods, there have been multiple requests, but there's sort of a backdrop of cities across the United States, significant ones already, Seattle and Portland, that have moved this way of actually lowering the, the basic default speed to 20 miles per hour, and then, you know, starting from there, anywhere that, where it's safe to have it higher, they would post it higher. And so, with this report, what we're reflecting is that the committee unanimously felt that that's the direction that Renton should go, and so, we're asking the staff to bring forward an ordinance to that effect. So, it's a significant change with, with lower the default speed limit to 20 miles per hour. It could still potentially be 25 in some places, but it would have to be posted at 25, not, not assumed to be 25 anymore. And, oh, yeah, with that, I would move approval of the committee report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Corbin, seconded by Ms. Pavoni, that the committee report be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, the report is approved. Now we'll move on. Oh, Mr. Prince?
Nope. Oh, yes, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
I knew that.
I'll make it easy for you.
We don't have any legislation, so new business, Ms. Perez? Or Ms. Witche, excuse me, I'm looking at my list wrong.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two items. The first item is that on, first of all, on Monday, May 27th, there will be no meeting, it's Memorial Day holiday, and on June 3rd, at 5:00 PM, the Community Services Committee will be meeting in the council conference room. We have two items on the agenda. The first is senior citizens advisory board appointments, and the second is emerging issues in community services. And then at 5:30 PM, committee of the whole will be meeting in council chambers. The first item is legislation session wrap-up, second item is airport landslide alternative, and the third item is emerging issues, and that is all.
Mr. Prince.
Just so that people don't get scared, landslide.
Landslide alternative. Landside alternative.
What is the alternative to landslide?
Slideside alternative.
I didn't want anyone freaking out, watching on TV.
Thank you.
Ms. Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one meeting to announce, on June 3rd, Monday at 4:00 PM, Finance Committee will be meeting in the council conference room. We have two issues to discuss. The first is vouchers and emerging issues in finance. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to announce a Transportation Committee meeting for June 3rd at 4:30 PM in the council conference room, and there's one item on that agenda, and that is emerging issues in transportation, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
What's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.